All right, we can get ourselves started here. We're called to order at 9:05 a.m. Janie, Bonnie, would one of you be willing to take some minutes?
I'm doing it.
Okay, so the item of business for today is taking a look at reviewing the contractors that we had discussed with yesterday. And I will lead in by saying by the information that I got this morning from Sean. I wasn't able to reach anybody last night, but I was able to get ahold of Sean this morning when he was available to talk to me because he was stuck in traffic, which was better for me than for him, I think. But you said that he had seen my email that he and Joe had started discussing that, but that they both had had some meetings and hadn't been able to call me back yet. But Sean said that in his experience, it was pretty rare as part of a qualifications process to ask for any sort of an estimate, but that he had seen it done. So I ran past him whether he thought it would be inappropriate or worse to for us to send out emails to the contractors and just say, hey, you know, we've got such great candidates for this. We're kind of, you know, working towards making a decision here to help us do that. Could you give us an estimate? Just a ballpark as far as what you think your your costs would be for a project of this size. He said that he thought that that would that would be fine. So he also said that he thought that for a project our size, we would probably be looking at contractor fees somewhere between 3% and 5% of the of the project cost. So that was what I heard this morning from from Sean. He said that he and Joe were in meetings middle part of the morning, but that they plan to touch base again later this morning, discuss it further, and then that they would follow up with us further. So that's what I've got.
So Eric, as I heard you kind of relay, and I've been processing what you recapped in your conversation with Sean. Just another approach that might even might be simpler for the three firms under consideration is, what if we were to say, you know, our budget maximum for the project manager is, I think, 5% of $50,000 is $2,500.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I did that mentally, and I'm always a little tricky with commas are not my favorite thing. Let me put it that way. Numbers, commas and numbers. But you know, if we were to say, are you still will it? Are you still interested in being considered? That that might be another approach, just throwing out an alternative.
Well, we did. We did put up to twice that in our
Right.
In our whatever.
Promotion, using the motion on.
Yes, gotta have my coffee.
Maybe that would be delightfully surprisingly low if it came to 5%. So that leaves my concern somewhat.
I mean, you know, I almost feel like they've already used like chunk of that in contacting us and the time they spent with us. And I realized that when that with that kind of business, that's that's part of your operating costs. But time is money.
Yeah, and I had I have another thought that I'll again, I'll just share. You know, between last night, wrapping up last night and today, which is, you know, I think our I think it would be beneficial to the library to the success of the three phases of the projects to pick someone who we think we want to have a long-term relationship with. And I don't know, in my career, when I've had similar situations, it's sometimes it's come down to who do I think I'm going to have the best working relationship with? So that when problems do arise, because they will, I'm going to be notified quickly. We're going to be, you know, creative and thinking about how to solve them, you know, and hopefully at a low, low impact, whether it's time impact or cost impact. So and I think, Eric, that in a way goes back to you because you're you're right. You're going to be the face of the library, the voice of the library and the client on a day-to-day basis.
You and Lindy, yeah.
Right, Lindy, your face isn't on here. I forgot you're
That's okay, the big L.
That's right.
Okay, so you're wondering who who we felt closest connection to?
Yeah, I know that you have prior experience with, I think, Justin, right, our rethink. And maybe you have experience with other firms from your other professional experience outside of Lake Bluff, I don't know. And then we have the references too, right? We were very specific about, we want references. We could talk about how we do we divide and conquer contacting those references? Is that something that, you know, Eric, you would do? Because you probably know many of these people. Just I'm just kind of going through
Well, Lindy had
organized order, how how to differentiate the candidates.
Lindy had contacted some of the references already at the end of last week. And I believe that the verdict there on the references that we contacted was was pretty universally positive.
Yes.
Said, yeah.
That's correct.
I'm wondering if anyone has a candidate that they're ready to step away from to begin with. So we're down to two. I feel that way. I just wondered if anyone else is comfortable discussing it. That's one way to look at it, and we're then we're not sound a big threesome.
Okay, which would be the two candidates that that would be on your list, Kathy?
Well, the candidate that would not be on my list is Olson. I felt the least comfortable with them. I felt I honestly felt Erica with his very little experience, and I'd rather not. You know, I'd rather be dealing with someone who's been through the whole process from a variety of, she's obviously she kept referring to her experience at Northwestern, but has she home experience in libraries and so on and so forth? So my first impression also, and maybe to their disadvantage, their presentation just came off as kind of boring and dry. And you know, so of the three, I could easily move on and discuss the other two competitively.
Kathy, that was that was my overall take from it. The other two seemed a lot more interested.
Yeah.
And while I really like the idea of a female engineer.
Yes.
I agree with you that that, you know, I looked at her resume that that Eric sent, and it's all
I know.
Is that right?
He knows how to design a frat house, you know, anyway. Which probably isn't all that far off from what we're doing. Yeah, the other end of the spectrum.
It is exactly where I can. I sort of I sort of I sort of saw Reese Witherspoon running around a lot, so.
Yeah. I felt We ended up winning the case, remember?
I do have to say on, I do have to say on Olson's behalf that I do really like Scott. It's kind of the fellow in the middle there. I I do have to agree, though, that the the presentation yesterday kind of didn't do them any any favors. It felt dry, and it felt like it left them less engaged than the other candidates. And I do have to share the the concerns a bit regarding Erica's inexperience. On the one hand, we've got a small project that we're working on here. You know, and on that project alone, I think, you know, less experience would probably be fine. But, you know, again, as Bonnie noted, we're looking to establish, fingers crossed, a longer term relationship with a contract manager that would take us through, you know, much more substantial construction phases. Lindy, you had a chance to meet with Scott.
Yeah, I really liked him. He's the only one that acknowledged the visit and came out twice. He's an architect, which I thought maybe we could take off some of Joe's work in the future. But I agree with you. Erica did seem to be less experienced, and I wasn't as comfortable with her as I was with Scott. And I think Scott would be more expensive than, you know, an assistant. So, yeah, I kind of agree with everybody.
Yeah, no, I was really excited to have WB Olson in the as part of the process here, and it kind of, I don't know, didn't was kind of a little bit disappointed with their presentation yesterday, but say lovey. Okay, so is that is that a consensus then?
That we eliminate WB Olson?
Yes.
Yeah.
Bonnie?
Yes, I say yes.
So then that would be SMC and rethink with Justin Pathman.
You know, I have mixed feelings about Justin. He's nearby, which is positive. He sounds like he would devote his full attention to our project, which is positive. As for a long-term relationship, all three of them brought that up on their own without any prompting from us. So I think they're they're all cognizant of our desire to do that. But I also, I thought I thought SMC was just great. I am not thrilled with the fact that they're all the way out in Elgin.
And this is a winter project.
What's that?
And this is a winter project.
But the tradespeople, I mean, they may have other business in the area. I don't know if they're currently at Highland Park. I have to go back to my notes. And the tradespeople may not be from Elgin. But we could, you know, check that part out.
Yeah.
They've certainly done plenty of other library projects up and down the North Shore.
Like Fremont. That's not really North Shore.
Well, they
Well, it's it is B.
And Prospect Heights, where there are two COVID era projects, if you will, that are complete, completed in COVID. I paid particular attention to those two. And we don't know where the proposed project manager would be commuting from. I mean, their offices might be in Elgin, but I doubt that the project manager would be expected to go there and then come to Lake Bluff when we need, when that person's expected to be at the library. So I
They worked at Wenetka, Indian Trails. So I mean, those are obviously closer.
Yeah. Highland Park, I believe, was was in there that they'd worked.
Although I noticed all three of them, there was an overlap. They all three of them, some of them have worked at the same library. So apparently, it's not unusual to go from one project manager to another.
Yeah.
Also, John brought up the issue about not having a return in the in the room, which, I mean, just shows his eyesight and his, you know, forward thinking.
Yeah.
Not having a return, you mean an air return?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sorry. So if we seal off that room, how are we going to circulate air?
Yeah. The which which really is kind of a weird testament to the building's original construction anyways, because my understanding is that room used to be sealed off at one point. So kind of kind of assumed that that stood us in good stead in terms of circulation and other things, but apparently not. So but yeah, that I did think was was noteworthy as well, that he had some good observations about the space and some thoughts as far as things to look at.
Well, I liked one thing he said initially was to get together with and and what defines success for the room? That he knows what what we're really looking for, and that would motivate their, you know, their mission, which I like the way he phrased that. I mean, I tell you, and I will go back even further on going back with Enberg Anderson in the very beginning of our space study. We have, we've got a booklet this thick on drawings and blah, blah, blah. And at some point in time to get estimates, he brought in Shane McNutt just to get, really, I felt like a ballpark. And we got down to the penny estimates of rooms and insulation and electrical. And then that was nobody paid for that. That was just two firms consulting on a on a future project. So I was, I've been impressed with Shane McNutt since the very beginning. And I will say, going into this and meeting their prospectus was so impressive, impressive. I kind of didn't have any other room for candidates. But I really did like, is it Justin? And it's Justin, Jason and Tom.
Yeah.
Rethink. I like his commitment, his simplicity that he approached it with.
You know, I don't know. I'm sorry, Kathy, are you? Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Jenny.
I was, the one thing that struck me was that rethink. He did not want to act, I can't remember what the two terms are. Did not want to be the one to sign the contracts and
Yeah.
Be what the one on the hook, so to speak. That's not the right term, but there's a legal term for it that they call it. And honestly, I'm not sure how I feel about that. That would be more work for for you, Eric, because you would, I mean, he would. He would vet all the contracts, but you would be the one to sign them, and you'd have to be writing checks and stuff all the time. I kind of think that it wouldn't be so bad on this, which is a relatively small job. But down the road, I
Yeah.
I don't know that that's a good thing. If you're spending money for a project manager, you want to have him do the whole thing, I think. I recognize that that's a little bit more money, but I think it's money well.
I agree.
And I think that speaks to another factor that jumped out at me, which was the difference in the the size of the firms that rethink just has three people.
Yes.
And I thought that that jumped out in a couple places, you know, with the the ability and willingness to jump in on the paperwork and contract side. You know, that for them might come down to more of just, you know, people hours. They may not have with so few people, the the time to put in on that sort of stuff. Whereas Shales McNutt, you know, I across the board, you know, I definitely got the sense that they had plenty of you know, people to keep things going. And, you know, I thought that came out as well in terms of discussion as far as, you know, what would you do if, you know, the contract manager became unavailable? You know, I thought it was pretty clear with SMC that they would have people in readiness to to jump in and be able to keep things going. I thought that they communicated that pretty well. Whereas I was probably least certain with rethink that they would be able to do that. I do have to say, though, that when it when it came to when it came to the COVID side of things, that that was one answer that SMC left me a little bit uncomfortable with. And actually WB Olson, I thought, had a like Erica had a really thorough answer, I thought, on that as far as how they'd handled the previous situation and jumped in and you know, closed it off, did what they needed to do, got people tested, and then got them back to work. Whereas I got more of a sense from from John where it was kind of on the COVID that like, well, you know, we get our guys out and we, you know, we do, we're do what we need to do. I forgot to wear a mask. We were we wear masks. It's like
Eric, actually, I, so I, you know, as I was asking those questions, I actually did take notes. And I had fairly good notes from
Okay.
From them, you know, again, they were the first, they were the first firm, the first interview, right? It said, we've put in mask mandates, even if the client doesn't require. The contract manager or construction manager or project manager will enforce the mask. They had sign-in sheets. They've done temperature checks. They've put in hand sanitizing stations. But one thing I do remember is Jason, who's in the field more, actually really provided more specifics than John did. And I think that's just an example of the role, right, the role that Jason plays. So so I felt that their answer, again, first one up was was pretty thorough.
I know the details. Maybe maybe I just fixated too much on on the on John's tone, because John was much, he talked more, and he was much more kind of where Jason talked less and had more detail. And maybe that was just kind of hooked me there rather than the details, which should have.
I think it was Erica that said somewhere, they had evolved through this much more than we have. And that one of them, I thought it was Erica, just said, basically, at this point, you know, we've got it down. A year and a half ago, it was panic mode. What do we do? And actually, John referenced Skokie in particular. He gets in the weeds as far as the local restrictions of his clients. But I think they're all feeling confident in managing this situation now.
Yeah.
Much more confident, just just Eric, as you are in running library. I mean, you've got a system and you're flexible and you know, you know, if you have to switch gears, you switch gears, but it's they kind of know how to do it. So but I did, I agree, Bonnie. I thought that John did a good job with that question, so.
Okay.
I would, I would say this about SMC. I feel like because they're the midsize firm, right? I think, Janie, you said, we've got a small, medium, large sort of panel to choose from. I feel like SMC is going to be able to bring more weight to bear if we do have labor issues or materials issues. That could impact the timeline.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point.
Yeah, they may have more sources too. Then that was something I was worried about with Justin, that if they all have their field of contractors, and SMCs might be a little bit bigger. For a small job, people may turn away, you know, the electrical portion, and we're stuck. But SMC's got some sources to knock on the other stone.
Well, in 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 rethink's defense, it's a new company, yes, but it was a company that spun off from another company that was in business for a long on time, and he was with them. So he probably still has the same contacts. So I, you know, that is one thing in his favor. I mean, he was with a different company when he worked for us, right? Before he went out on his own, yeah.
Yeah. Now, he's been he's been with a couple a couple of different firms. He was with, I think it was actually a Pathman Engineering or something like that when we did the initial renovation. And then for a few years there, he was with Pacific, I think, was the name of the the company. And now he's with a different firm. The 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 scope of the current firm, I think, is a little bit different than the the previous ones. The when he was with with Pathman and then with with Pacific, I got more of a sense that those were bigger with with more individuals and more along the lines of what SMC and WB Olson. Whereas I kind of got the sense, talking to him yesterday, like, you know, he talked about being a boutique shop, you know, and being a smaller outfit, really, you know, focused on working with, you know, customers and that smaller custom experience, which is, I felt kind of a little bit different maybe than when we'd worked with them in the past. Lindy, does that match your your feeling, your reaction there as well?
I think he was established last January, and I think some of these projects that he did, it wasn't rethink that did them. Um, you know, it was
Yeah, I think most of them, it wasn't, yeah.
Right, so, yeah.
It's a it's a new firm. It's it's experienced people.
Right.
One thing that I'm looking over my notes for SMC, when we asked about the kind of the sequence of their job pre-construction, and then this this answer was pretty similar with everybody. Pre-construction, then construction, and then supervision. I wrote down time on site during the construction. This is John speaking, I guess, our project, probably not that much time on site because me and Eric because of nature of the job. So there's good and bad there. We don't need to pay someone just to look in a small room with three workers or doing what they're supposed to be doing. But on the other hand, I guess, first I kind of pulled back from that, but then I warmed up to it more because I reflected on the only project manager thing I've ever done is the roof. And Sean from Enberg Anderson was our project manager. And obviously, he wasn't up on the roof every day, nor was Eric, who I wouldn't want, if wanted him to be doing that.
Thank you.
But every time there was a glitch, it's like the the contractor brought it to Sean's attention. If necessary, Sean came out. Sean always communicated with Eric, and then Eric came and committed to it. So it seemed to work very well. So I do have that relationship idea in the back of my head. So I get where this big firm doesn't have to be there every day, but I think they're in constant communication. And then Eric and Lindy, we don't, especially I mean, this might be a good mini project to see how much supervision we need, because you guys have a lot of other work to do. This is a smaller job, but if we get into a bigger project, you can't be running up and down the stairs all the time looking at whatever. So so that's kind of a long way of saying I still don't know which one to choose. But I kind of get the, I kind of get the role. I understand why they don't need to be there as much.
You know, Kathy, you bring up a point that I have to say I was wondering about. Why are we, why is Sean not going to act as the as the manager this time while he did for the roof? What is
Because he, because Enberg Anderson did not, was at the construction company on the roof.
Okay.
See, he well, actually, Eric, maybe you can answer that better, because now I'm confusing myself. It has to do with conflict of interest, I believe, that if
It's like overseeing your own work.
I'm sorry, Lindy.
Is it maybe like overseeing your own work? You need to have a third eye or, you know, a second opinion to make sure that the work is being done the way Enberg Anderson has said it should be done? So we have another outside party looking and managing?
Yeah, I think it, I think that's, for instance, if Sean was our project manager, which I think we would all say, oh, yay, we love him. He knows the building. Let's do it. Um, he is, who's he representing? Us or the contractors or Enberg Anderson, who's his employer, who designed everything? And then if the design falls through, we have no recourse. Because I think it's just, I think it's just too potentially much of an overlap professionally.
Right, that that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
And I think the I think the scope is a number of moving pieces and contractors involved is greater as well. You know, because I I know Enberg Anderson, you know, first and foremost, are the architectural engineering design rather than managing the projects. So I think there might be, you know, a level of service that's beyond the the time that they have to be able to manage the project as well.
And with the roof, the Enberg Anderson had nothing to do with the design of the roof. That was just came about. So we leaned down the firm, which we had faith in. But they had no skin in the game, I guess, is the expression, but
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, you know, they, they were just architects looking at a construction job saying it's good or it's bad.
Yeah. No, that was a straight up replacement. So it was just determining what materials were going to be up there. It wasn't. You know, it wasn't like we were discussing like, you know, let's spec out a windmill or anything, you know, like that. Though, hey. I bet there's, I bet there's some pretty good wind up there. So maybe we should consider at some point.
Sure. I can't even picture a weather vane up there. It's just the wrong architecture.
That's probably true. And if we were going to do any sort of power generation, probably solar panels would make more sense.
There you go.
Even though the big sloping.
On, on the south side. That would be awesome, actually.
That would be nice. There's more of a slope on the south side than, uh. Than you think, uh, just looking at the, the north side. Anyways, that's probably a later conversation.
If I could just jump this in, um, I think Jason brought it up, Justin. The issue of parking, um, that's tough. That's something to solve right now, but that is going to be a problem. And, and I wrote down good neighbors. I was thinking if the situation across the street from us hasn't, doesn't have an owner. Perhaps a good kind of project manager could talk to them and. Work out some kind of parking arrangement for trucks and so forth, tradesmen, we're going to be working at the library because where else are they going to put their stuff? So that's, that's just sort of to be considered down the road.
You're talking about in the bank parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, that thought occurred to me too, you know, and there's that other parking lot that's just on the east side of that. And I park in that all the time, but, um, you know. I, I drive a Jeep and it barely fits through because the, the greenery is so overgrown there. You kind of scratch up the car. I, I would not want to be. Pulling in there with construction trucks. I mean, nobody says boo about anybody parking in there and nobody knows it's there hardly.
Yeah. It's just claustrophobic with a compact.
Yeah, I bet it does. I bet it does. So.
Anyway, it's something, it's something for us to consider because one of their trucks would take up two parking spaces on the street and there's only about. Seven parking spaces out there to begin with. And one of them is handicap. So just, just to clarify on it, but.
And I, you know, with the, with the paving that happened, there were trucks outside in those public parking spaces outside the library. I guess the closer the trades people can be to the library, the less time they're going to spend running after their truck to get tools and supplies and, you know. Taking a cigarette break or whatever might be. So it might be advantageous, even if it means perhaps the library staff. Doesn't park behind the building for that week.
That's just what I was thinking.
Yeah, there is that. I think we're talking probably about pickup truck sized stuff, but we, we just spent a lot of money. Actually, we haven't even spent the money yet. On the, on the repaving of the driveway. So we've got it. We want the real heavy construction stuff in there and a brand new service. But. Yeah. And then that's a very sharp right turn or left turn to get out of.
Around the building.
So, um, yeah, it's something to, but that actually, I think that's something a project manager would eyeball and.
The project manager can solve it. So I, I, I'm going to go back, Jamie, to something you said, which was about mixed feelings around rethink. I'm just a little concerned that the firm is too small. For managing both a project that builds over time and in scope. As well as the uncertainty of COVID. And what I said before, which is, um. Having those established contacts with the trades so that when. Supply of. Trades, subcontractors or materials becomes an issue. I just feel that SMC is going to have more pull. So of the two, my, my, um, recommendation would be SMC.
Okay. Yeah. I, I kind of, as much as I like the idea of, um. Giving rethink the work for, for many reasons, um, and, and helping them to build their company. I, I have to say that, that SMC appeals to me the most as well. Just their enthusiasm, their, their, um, personableness. You know, in the interview process impressed me a lot. I ju, I just thought it was really interesting that the entire time John had a smile on his face, you know? And it was a big contrast between that and, and going with, um, the Olson company. They were just very glum. You know? So, um.
Yeah. And Jason, um, who we didn't get to see, which is too bad. I liked the fact that he, um, he was a carpenter. And then he went to Purdue and got this degree. So, I mean, he's someone who can get in there and look up, you know, look in the rafters and say, and know what everybody's talking about. And be a problem solver. And I just thought that would be, that's a good, uh, background to have in this kind of job instead of just all. High level academics kind of thing. I mean, the guys have been working it out there. Um. Yeah, I, I'm certainly comfortable with us. I mean, I sort of feel. Emotionally, it'd be fun to work with a rising star kind of thing down the road, but we need as much help as we can get. So I think that we're in very good hands with SMC.
Well, what, what we, I guess we, our, our thought was to. To contact our top choice. And if they came in with a price that was too high to go to a second choice. So I, I think. I think it's pretty clear to me that we've ranked them one, two, three here.
Yeah, yeah.
And if, you know, if we did, for whatever reason, have to go to rethink, maybe we could. Request that they act as the contract signer.
At risk.
I mean, he, he's got enough experience in that field that he's got to know what that means.
Right.
Know, so, um. I, I, I don't know. It's a possibility. Certainly worth a question if it comes, if it comes to that.
Yeah. The question being why, he, I mean, he. He immediately assigned his role. So we could at least ask the question, you know?
Right, right.
We prefer this, what do you think of that?
Yeah.
Reason. So I think especially because of our situation with foundation funds, library. It would just be a lot easier if there was an approval at our end and then someone was taking care of the paperwork.
Right, right.
Yeah. Agreed. You know, it's. It's not that we couldn't, that we couldn't do it, um, in-house, but it would certainly add to the work. And I think in particular because. You know, we. Rely a lot on, uh, the, the village for a lot of our higher level accounting services. And, you know, that I think makes it a lot more difficult for the library than to try to scale up. The, those services or. You know, try and free up hours for, for someone to put in more time. On things when things get busy because it's more of a collaborative, shared. Um, time with, uh, with the village that we're relying on.
I just think it's, it's resources in this firm that he doesn't have them to cover the expenses.
No, agreed. He doesn't.
One of the firms talks about, they anticipated a, a shortfall of materials. So they just bought the materials and sorted for the client. No.
Yeah, that, that was SMC that did that. That, that.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's far sighted.
Yeah.
That impressed me.
They've got money in the bank. They, they have the resources to do that, knowing that down the road, the client would pay for it. But Justin doesn't. Much newer at that. So.
Good point.
Okay. So it sounds like then that, um, trace number one would be SMC. And that, um, we would, we will talk to them first regarding what the cost would be with them. And then. You know, work with them first and then go to one of the others if need be. Does that sound?
So, so is the order then rethink would be number two and WB Olson would be number three? Is that, is that how you feel about it? Or would you flip the number two and three?
I agree with that, Jamie.
Okay. Uh, I will reach out to, um, SMC then and, and get that. Process started. I, I, I do think, um. Do we want to rank them so that we wouldn't have to come back to? And then do that formally in an emotion or something of the like, so that we wouldn't need to come back to another meeting if things didn't work out with SMC?
Yeah, Jamie just did that.
Oh, okay.
Go for it, guys.
We're set. So I'll, I'll start with SMC and then if things don't work out, then we'll go with rethink. And I will keep you posted. Um, and keep you informed so that I can get your feedback as to whether things are. Uh, whether we feel good about what we're getting as far as contract number.
So I would.
Nobody, go ahead, please.
I, I thank you. I was just going to say, I would expect, and maybe Eric, you should specifically request. To have Jason come out and meet you and see the building.
Agreed.
I think, I think the sooner we can get the individual who's going to own it, because John might do the initial.
Yeah.
Contracting, estimating, whatever. But I think the sooner we, you can get Jason involved and build, start building relationship with him.
Agreed. Okay. Sounds good. I think we've got a, a plan then for moving forward, which is very exciting.
Yeah.
Um, so I am expecting, um. Today to be finalizing, um, a time to discuss the, the contract with Enberg Anderson on the 30th. So I'm looking at, uh, trying to set something, I think, up for either 1:00 PM or 2:00 PM on that date. Um, it looked like that was, um, middle of the day was a time that worked for most everybody. Um, I want to get that on the calendar before, um, Sean's availability dries up.
Okay. So we don't have a, a, a set time for that quite yet?
No, um, but fingers crossed we should by the end of the day.
Okay. And, and you're pretty sure it's going to be on the 30th?
Yes. Uh, the, the, the date seems pretty well. Well set. Uh, Sean doesn't, uh, Sean and Joe don't have too many windows there. You know, as, as, as they told us when, uh, um, you know, we got back together here, um, there's actually been a lot of. They've been pretty busy. There's, there has been quite a bit of construction work that's happened over the last year. You mentioned the work at Prospect Heights and I, I know that they're. One, one of several libraries in the area that I'm aware of that. Had projects that they had been looking at staging, uh, carefully within their space over the, the course of, um, a couple of years. And they basically just. Looked at COVID and said, well, let's just close down for nine months and just do it all.
Really? They closed the library?
Yeah. Well, they, they, they figured since, well, you know, if, if we're not keen about having people in the space anyway, then. We'll, we'll just. You know, skip creating a, um, an alternate library site. Uh, which, you know, sometimes happens with, with bigger library projects. And, you know, all the more complicated things and staging that we were going to do. And we'll just do a quicker, more cost effective approach and. Get it all done. So, um. Okay. I think we're. Set moving forward.
Is there any other business? To discuss?
So I'm, I'm going to bring up something just very quickly and it was prompted by the solar panel, um, comments.
Oh dear.
No, no, no. So, uh. I, I was just thinking about the power interruptions in the, in our community and, um, the fact that there are more people working from home today. And I think that's going to persist to some extent. Even when we have COVID, hopefully in the rearview mirror. So, um, in conversation with someone, someone just said, hey, you know, just on live, I guess. I mentioned that the library was closed with the, with the weather that came through recently. And they were just kind of surprised that the library itself didn't have a generator. And so I thought I would at least ask or put that on the radar screen. I don't know if the phased construction plan anticipates getting a generator for the library. Cause I think it's something that the, the community would use. They know when the storm went through, some people who work from home were like. Scrambling to try to continue to conduct business or, um. You know, the, the, the library could be that, that place where the community gets together when there is a power outages or whatever. And business still needs to get done. Schooling still needs to get, get done, et cetera.
I think there would, uh, be value on that. We actually had quite a discussion on that a, a few years back. I know that was, um. Carl, who was a former trustee, was, was very keen to, to see us, um, pursue. I, I, I think at the time that, uh, what it came down to was the cost. That, uh, we, we got some rough estimates and most of them. Were. Fair bit higher than I think the, the board was comfortable going with. For a project of that nature at that time. But certainly I, I, I think there continues to be a lot of value to. Uh, potentially having one back there for all the reasons that you, you mentioned, Bonnie. And I do love the idea of. You know, having the library positioned to, to be. You know, when there's this big power outage in the, the village, a, a place where people can come in and they can have access to. You know, electricity and wifi and, and the things that are not working.
Maybe not a 3D printer, but a printer.
So.
Yeah, I think, I, I remember this, I remember sitting in this booth room talking about this a lot. Carl really did a lot of research on it as well. And even went to the village and some. Some connection with public safety, but, um. There was some time, it was kind of concluded, it was too big of a project cost wise right now. And. I, I think Eric, it has something to do with. Our own. Power. Production ability. And it was thought perhaps if he ever did an overall larger renovation. That because of then the HVAC, all the changes that would have to happen, maybe that would be a time where the costs would be worthwhile to include it because. I guess the thinking was it just, it was, it was too big physically for, because what Eric, so our building is so weird. That it would have to be a pretty powerful generator to provide the energy, valve, the mix of crannies. And it just wasn't cost effective. But if we ever really get into, you know, rebuilding the whole library, that might be a good time to do it. So.
Well. How about to, to start, um, why don't I go back and dust off the, uh, the files from. The last time that we discussed.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we can, we can see where we left off there.
Yeah. We even call Eric, or call Carl, um, because I think he, he really did all the footwork for us and.
Yeah.
Well, he can fill us in. Hey, but good point, Bonnie. Bonnie, thank you.
Yeah. No, definitely. Um, and we do seem to have our power outages in Lake Bluff for whatever reason.
Not as bad as they used to be, but.
True. Um, and it, and it's been a few years since we've had Lake Aqua, um, Lake Viaduct as well.
Yeah, I thought of that the other day. Um.
Drainage there is better that, you know. The, there, there used to be times when it, when it was like the community practically closed up shop. Cause there was this like 12 foot deep lake, all of a sudden that just formed. Anywho, um, any other, other business? Okay. I will take a look back at the files on the, the HVAC and then anticipate that the next time we have a building and grounds committee meeting, which shouldn't be too far in the future because. We're continuing to push this process forward. That'll just give a quick update, uh, as far as where we left off. And highlight the salient points.
Just, uh, in conclusion, um, as a committee, so Eric's going to talk to Shane McNutt. If Shane McNutt says, yeah, we want to do it and. Is Eric authorized to just say, go for it? Um, or is that, is that where we are at this process?
My understanding from the, um. my understanding from the, the discussion at the previous building and grounds committee meeting, as well as at the board meeting, was that that was the, that was the consensus, was that we wanted to move forward if things looked right. And, you know, as noted, I, I do anticipate, you know, sending out some updates to the committee, so that you know, if, if any members of the building and grounds committee have questions or concerns about where we're finalizing, that, you know, that you can reach out to me and, and say, you know, I, I just want to ask a question about this, or maybe we should hit pause. I'm a little uncomfortable. Just so that the three of you are all looped in, so that we don't end up with a situation where, you know, we, we feel like there's something we would have liked to discuss.
Sounds good. I, I can offer what I captured in the minutes from the meeting in regard to the contract with the construction or project manager. Do you want me to read it? It's a sentence or two.
Sure.
So this is during the committee reports, and it was actually finance. I captured it under finance. The committee recommended the construction manager expense for the Stro quiet reading room renovation be paid for by the library rather than the library foundation. Costs could be funded from higher than expected service revenues, for example, passport, and reduced expenses, for example, telecoms. Janie Church moved, and John Heitzelman seconded the motion to have the library cover the cost of the construction manager expense, not to exceed $5,000 for the Stro quiet reading room from current year funds. All voted aye, and at my recollection, is the $5,000 was aligned to the max, I think, Eric, that your approval level is?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So to me, that kind of reads as if, if the estimate from SMC comes in under 5,000, we're good to go.
We're a go. Yeah, yeah.
Now, I, I'd be happy, I would be happy to look at the contract, Eric, if you would like. In fact, I would put in the contract, we want someone to be onsite, not all day, every day, when the trades are there, but they should be coming in unannounced, different times of day, whenever a trade is in the building. And not to be there all day.
You mean daily?
Yeah, I, I think they should. I think they should show up daily. Again, just, it doesn't have to be all day. It could be on your way to another job where you're going to be spending four hours.
Yeah.
I would.
Okay, yeah, um. But before I sign off on it, certainly I'll send out the contract to, to everybody. You know, ke, keeping in mind that the communication, you know, for open meetings act needs to be just between two individuals, so, you know, I can then send the, that information out to everybody, but then just be sure you don't hit reply all. And make it a group discussion, because that's what gets us in trouble. But I'll send it out to, to you, and then if anyone has any thoughts on anything, then you can just send it, send it back to me, and and I can factor that in. I like the idea of the, just, the construction manager just dropping in. I think that's good practice.
And, and one of them, and I can't remember which one, did, did put that in, in their prospectus somewhere, or mentioned that, that, that rings a bell.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I, my husband and I were serial fixer-uppers, and dropping in unannounced, different times a day, absolutely critical.
Okay.
Right, okay, so I guess we just, if there's nothing else, we just need an option to adjourn.
I so move that we adjourn our building and grounds committee.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned at 9:59. Good job, guys.
Yeah.
All right.
Good luck, Eric.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks a lot.
Nice, nice job, everyone.
Yeah.